I'll find it later.
Okay.
Is there any extra copies of the agenda? I didn't come get a packet.
Sure, sure, sure. Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, if you want to, that would be great.
There was nothing else, right?
Okay.
No.
Brendan, you ready for the bus stop?
Anybody else here?
Thank you. I haven't coughed in a week. It's the heat in here. No, I'm gonna break this thing.
What we got for the bus stop?
Jerry and Brennan were supposed to bring back more information.
The question that came up was the high school bus that was brought up and the mother was talking. And what Brendan probably can explain a bit, I can talk about it, but I think she knows the problem much better than I do.
So I spoke to the high school driver after that meeting, trying to figure out what was going on. And she is pulling diagonal across the road because there is a student that lives at the 825. So she's pulling diagonal to ensure his safety. I've put a stop to that now. She was doing it because the stop wasn't listed on the stops, which means she can't make the stop. So now it's listed there and she'll make the stop door side on the way back. She was, but she was going diagonal on the road to just ensure his safety because it's kind of on a corner. And she didn't want him crossing the street without protection.
Isn't that the new thing? All of us drivers pulling up to the middle and keep people from passing?
It is, yep.
It is.
Is it a bad thing?
No, but it's not completely legal either. Police are saying, you know, end courts, like, if you're doing it because you feel like it, then you might face the consequences of it. But a driver takes that responsibility to do it. And if somebody feels that it's wrong because it's technically crossing the center line, then they can be taking the court for it.
But you fix that by changing the stop to door side.
So I did change that stop to door side. So the driver will not be doing that anymore. She should have talked, she should have just told me that I didn't add it.
Have you talked to all the drivers to make sure that none of them, nobody else is doing that?
Yes, and nobody else seems to be saying that they're doing it. But like I always say, communication with the public and drivers is the best. I don't want them doing that if there's a concern with the stop. I've asked them all to come to me. They're out there driving, so the best thing for them to do is to come to me and we can work on it together. Because I'm not out there every day on every one of these routes.
Works for me.
So what's the answer? So you changed that, you added that bus stop, but we can't add one for the other people that came originally?
So I added that bus stop. That bus stop, that bus already went up the hill and turned around. So all I did was stop coming down the hill so the student won't cross the road anymore. This stop that they're asking us to change will require us to go down another road, come back out, and then continue the stop.
And it was a terrible turn, no matter what you did.
So it's the turn in, the turn in and the turnaround that bother me. The turn in you're gonna make blind. And the turnout you're gonna make blind and on the wrong side of the road. So those do concern me. Also, it adds five minutes to the route. It's, the road's less than a half a mile long.
What's the standard for how far someone has to walk?
A mile.
For that age, the age group with the child?
No, and what Brendan explained was the bus stops, last year when we had a limited number of buses, all those short stops were eliminated. All those where you had to be driving up less than a mile. So it's not just that road. They were changed all coming down, they were less than a mile down to the main part of the road with the expedite pickup.
I eliminated all of them except for one on Route 16 because I didn't want to stop the bus at that particular spot on Route 16. So I had them going down to the urban town on one. But I did eliminate all those short roads.
And as you recall, the issues, some of the issues, the primary part of the issue being brought up were more between other parents at that bus stop. When that was brought to my attention, I did call the police, I gave them the license number of the vehicles. And as I talked to PD, it was more of a traffic matter than a bus stop matter.
Okay.
Not something that I could go down.
From where they were parking?
Not just so much parking, but behavior at the bus stop that the other parents didn't like.
Didn't that woman say there were a whole bunch of guys parking on the sides of the road doing that?
Um, yeah, but again, that's more of a traffic matter.
I agree.
That's why, again, so I asked the police to go down, just thinking what to say, if you have an issue, you know, please let them know what the problem is. I can't go down there and dictate where people park on the road. I can go down and address matters that are between children at a bus stop, but not parents.
I did also get the max number of students at that stop. And there's four at that stop. So even for that being at the end of the road, there's four students. A lot of the end of the roads are more.
And they have been given an alternative bus stop, but apparently at our last discussion, that was a problem due to work schedule.
Right, and that's actually a safer route too with the pay?
The alternative.
The alternative, yep.
The alternative stop, I mean, I have no problem with existing stop. And if it was my children, I would use the existing stop. But it's safer to use the alternative stop than to go down that road.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, thanks. Sorry.
So I'm, the board then would like me to respond to the parent. How, I just wrote down what Brennan said, it's safer to use the alternative.
I know it's the existing, right?
The existing stop is safer than going down the road. But if she doesn't want to use that stop, then the alternative stop is safer. And it would also be about the same time as if I did go down that road. If you had to add that time and then come around, it would be the same time. This alternative stop would be at the same time as I would stop at her house.
But you, but didn't you say it wasn't safe as safe?
The going down the road or the alternative stop?
I'm sorry, Bob, I should have done that. I'm so sorry.
That's fine.
We wanna hear your question.
I wanna make sure that I'm clear too. I'm not very good at the public speaking thing. I'm getting better at it.
You're not the public.
You are the public to me.
Just for clarity.
Thank you.
It's less safe to go to their house.
Yes.
You are very comfortable with the existing stop. There is an alternative stop if she prefers that, which may be perceived as safer. And it arrives there approximately the same time as the stop she's complaining about.
It, no, it arrives there approximately the same time as if I changed the route to go to her house.
Which is what she's requesting?
Yes.
I think, looks like she's been tried. So it seems like we tried to accommodate her? Oh, no, Tony.
We have given her an alternative that is safe and, you know, isn't within the timeframe if we had to do the turnaround to end up at her house anyway.
Okay, and addressed the parking with the police department?
Any matters that happen, give reports and call the PD.
So feel the best avenue for her issues is with the police department for parking?
Right.
Okay, I'll get that out.
But she was taking care of that anyways.
Right, I know she made it. I hope she was able to work it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll go break up that court tonight.
We have need for one non-public and we might as well do two others before, rather than later in the meeting.
What do you want to do now, I'm sorry?
We do have a need for a non-public.
Now?
Yeah, it would be now because it would be things that we have to address later in the meeting.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion to go in non-public?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
McColl, yeah?
We are going in under three different items. We are going in under.
H.R.S.A. 91A, 3, 2, B.
C.
C.
And L.
L?
L. Consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally to one or more members of the public body, even when legal counsel is not present.
I have a motion, second. All in favor?
McColl, yeah?
What, aye?
Johnson, aye?
Cole, aye?
Non-public?
Make a motion to commend a non-public.
Have a second? Alright, make the second. All in favor?
Cole, aye?
What, aye?
Johnson, aye?
McColl, yeah?
Alright. Public comment? None? What do you want to say?
Maybe the FY20 warrant articles. Maria's going to pass out two different documents. One has what the original articles were and what changes were made altogether. And then one is just after the changes that the budget committee recommended or suggested.
So the first one is a markup. What was, you'll see things that, one is Tracy's. You'll see the, where the, where it's X-ed out and replaced, that's what it was replaced with. So that you could see what the original was and what it was changed to on that day. Then what we did was we took that document and it was formatted so that it's, all the markup is gone. So it would be the, what would be, what would be if the board so wishes to move forward with those recommendations that the budget committee did last week, this is what it would look like. But we, the board would have to vote again to approve what the budget committee changes that were made. And if any other modifications need to be made, this is the time to do it. Because we have to send it to the budget committee.
We're asking you to work from the one that's not mocked up. The one that is easier to go through. And this would be with what the, with the budget committee suggested. Okay, sort of on that page.
I just want to know which one is the mocked up version?
It says changes indicated below is the one that has the changes on it.
Okay.
And then the other one's a clean copy incorporating the changes.
We can go back to the mock-up version anytime so that you can see what the original said. Because you're not gonna necessarily see the original ones that we sent to the budget committee on this sheet. You're gonna see the ones after they made recommendations. So we're gonna start with each one. Okay? So Article 2 is the contract.
Oh, I do have a question here. And I'm sure you've looked at this, but the health insurance was, what, 6% lower?
Five point something, I gotta look it up.
Does that, does this, this number obviously reflects that?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
The whole budget does.
Okay, that was it, I just wanted to thought of that today, thank you.
So there weren't any changes from the original. And we now see that we have the 5-0 for the school board recommends and the 5-5 for the budget committee represents the appropriation. Okay? So when we're presenting the warrant articles, although it hasn't been done recently, often each individual board member will take a warrant article and speak to it because they have passion or expertise or clarity around some of the warrant articles. So we actually weren't going to suggest that since we have so many that at the end, if you would like, we would say, who really feels like they can speak to all of the questions that might come up on Article 2? Be that at the budget hearing or the budget committee meeting next Tuesday night or on January 8th at the public hearing or at the deliberative session. I was talking to Bobby for the meeting, he said they haven't done that in a long time. But that's how districts that I've worked with do it. So the moderator would read it, let's say at the deliberative session. And then someone would either talk to it or answer questions about it. I think we might get them this year because there's an awful lot here. We don't have to make that decision now. But think, would it be something that you, we can go back later after we look at all of them and see if the board would like to do that? Okay? Go ahead.
I do have, I did grab the data that shows that Wakefield is middle of the road.
So you might, because I know you have a passion around this, wouldn't wanna say, I'm gonna speak to this one if anybody asks questions next week or at the public hearing or the deliberative session.
If it's irrelevant because it's already been voted on, then it's irrelevant, but.
Right, but you still have to present them to the public that come?
Okay, so that will have that for the next meeting on the second, but for.
So the moderator, moderator reads them, right? And then somebody asks a question and the board member can speak on that.
Okay, I did.
I think in the past they've also had people, and I know that on the budget committee, I think too, has taken a warrant article from the town and spoke on it before it's been up for discussion. And I think with some of our warrant articles, that would be good to do and then if people have questions.
Is the process, so is the process of vote seconded in discussion?
Yes, just like you're doing here. It's always, whoever decides to speak to that warrant article already says, I'll move the warrant article if somebody seconds it.
Right.
The moderator, like you said, usually reads it. And then there's a discussion. If Tracy is addressing this particular warrant article, there may be somebody from the audience that may wanna, you know, ask a question. And where she knows what went on, then she's the perfect candidate to come to.
So the chair usually moves the warrant article?
No, usually the person that is going to talk to that warrant article moves it.
Okay.
In the past, what we've done is you decided in board meetings in the past, Bob, you say, I'm gonna move the article. And Tracy may say, I'll be the one that second.
That's how it was last year.
That's how we've typically done it. And that's what I've seen.
Yeah, whoever's gonna speak to it usually.
That's what I'm saying, Bob, just not Bob as a chair, but Bob as a board member, I'm gonna move this.
I mean, they do the way, I know they do.
But that's just how you've done it, how the board has done it in the past.
Well, I'm going off of last year, I think Steve moved it and I seconded pretty much all of them. I mean, we had a lot less last year.
That was a unique, that was a unique year.
He was the only one spoke to him too.
He did.
Um, sorry. The insurance portion that Denny asked me and it kind of froze. I do have the answer if you guys wanna know, if you wanna know what we did for the contract negotiation. A joint committee shall be established to review and make recommendations for changes to health insurance. The committee shall consist of six members, three appointed by the association, three appointed by the school board. The committee shall begin meeting no later than January 1, 2019, and shall submit its recommendation in writing to the association and the school board no later than April 1, 2019. The committee's recommendations shall not be binding upon either the association or the board. If after receiving the committee's recommendations, the association and the school board agree to change health insurance provisions, the changes shall be placed in writing and appended to their 2017 through 19 and subsequent collective bargaining agreements.
Did you say, shall we get no late at the meeting, shall we get no later than January 1st?
I did.
How did we think about it?
I don't know. I don't know. But I wanted to make sure that everybody knew it is in place and the, both parties, neither party wants to spend this amount of money on health insurance. It just takes away money from potential instructional money and, of course, potential increase in salaries. It's just tremendous, so.
Do you have that on digitally? What you just said?
I don't know.
No, I don't know that we can share. Yeah, it's been ratified.
It's been ratified?
Yeah.
I mean, you can read mine.
I just wanted to have it in a minute.
Yeah, right. I'll get it too.
Okay, good. But I, I had, it was, it was, there were two TAs. Portion one, you know, part A, part B. And I thought I had an inclusive one, but I did not at the last meeting, so.
So do you think like next Tuesday you would wanna share that?
I would.
Yeah.
I very much would, that's why I asked you for it. I was in panic mode, I couldn't speak for like the next 10 minutes.
Yeah, me too. I, he kept asking me if we.
I know, and I knew where it was. And we ratified a piece in October and a piece in November. I assumed incorrectly that the November piece was inclusive of all of it. And the insurance was TA'd early on, so.
So Article 3 is.
Wait.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Wait. So while we're here, so we don't go back, because there were changes made throughout this document. They would, and at the time, we didn't have what the budget committee recommended or not. So we just wanna affirm what the board continues, it was 5 to 0 on these warrant articles. Can we just, and some of the language was changed and some of the dollar amounts were changed. So can we still go through each of the warrant articles and just affirm that that is still the case? That the school board is agreeing with what?
So you want another vote? There's only four of us here.
What?
It says a quorum.
It's still, it's still a quorum. I mean, it's just confirming that this stays, that's all.
Just, okay.
Unless you want me to change it to 4 to 0, it's 4 to 1, I'm, it's up to you.
I'd rather wait till Tony's here.
That's what I'm saying, so 5, 0.
But this has gotta go to, this has gotta go to the budget committee tomorrow.
So they have it in advance at the meeting, which is next Tuesday.
So.
We had an absentee, that's all. Okay.
So what are we doing?
4 to 0 probably, if that's the way.
4 to 1?
4 to 0.
No, 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 she is in the negative, so.
Okay, that's okay. So.
So 4 to 0?
We're changing it.
Does it prove it that we, we?
We're changing.
Every single one has to be checked?
Yeah, actually, I have.
Because there were changes made at most of these warrant articles.
So we just can't say that we approved the 5-0?
That's why I said it.
That's already there?
Because I think the 5 should be here for that.
I do too. But you can't.
I know.
With the ones that haven't changed, I think you can leave it at 5-0. But the ones that changed, yeah, you have to redo.
Okay, okay.
But as long as if it hasn't changed, it stays 5-0.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, but we're still gonna ask each time.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yes, thank you for.
2 is the same, right?
Yep.
Article 3, there was no change in it. It was a 5-0 by the school board and that was just if we have one special meeting, cost only. Okay.
Can we go back to number 2? There was a change monetarily in those figures?
No, it was not.
Okay.
It was, it was just the budget committee.
Okay.
Recommendation.
Nothing changed in 3, that's okay, 4 is so good, right?
Why were there 5-5 on the budget committee? What should?
I was asking that question.
If Article 2 is defeated, authorities will call one special meeting, oh, to address Article 2 costs only. Okay, is what it is.
So Article 4 is still in limbo. And that's gonna be a problem because we're going on the second, but we're not meeting 8 until the 3rd. So later on, because there might be changes to the budget, we might want to meet on 3rd. But we'll talk about that later. Nothing, no change right now because there's nothing to change. Okay, same with Article 5.
Let them know in advance so it doesn't appear. We're legally within our timeline for negotiations.
We are.
We are. And I wanna make sure that that's clear before we appear railroaded at the meeting.
Correct, however, if the, if we settle the paras ratified first, that would be Friday. That'd be the school board would have to meet Monday to ratify. Because we would be changing this whole warrant that would be then presented on the 8th. And I wouldn't wanna do that without the budget committee seeing it in advance that, because they haven't had a chance to recommend or not recommend the appropriation or the Article 5. So we're gonna have to talk about how we get this done and when the board would like to meet to ratify the contract and bring it to the board, if that's the case. If we don't settle, it will be different.
The numbers will change.
Yeah. Because I dropped beside my calendar somehow, it's the 3rd that we're meeting for the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Here at 8:00 or?
I believe 8:00. I'll check Jen and get back to you.
Yeah, I don't either, sorry.
I know it's the 3rd.
Moving on to Article 6. There was no change in this one. Maria, though, we're missing the budget committee recommends.
One of the.
On which? On which?
On Article 6.
Because they didn't vote.
On the. Oh, to reduce, I'm sorry, I thought we were on the windows. I saw the $200,000 and that way around the windows. I thought that they made a very, very good point in the discussions that went on about the deficit appropriation piece that rather than add to the special ed trust, if we were going to pass this, we could use this if we exceeded the amount in the special ed trust for this year. Did that make sense?
No.
No. We have $100,000 in the special ed trust right now, a little more, 105. And our overrun in special ed at this particular moment in time is 205. So we can't just use the special ed trust to cover the overruns this year in special education. So what I heard was rather than put another $100,000 in the expendable trust for special ed, special education, this could be used, a deficit appropriation at $200,000 to cover whatever there was for special ed. What that indicated to me is they would, they would approve this for that use. And I think that, for me, this is the best way to handle it.
Were we looking at, we were looking at a big overrun for special ed in the event that people moved into town that we're not expecting, right? We had 5, you said. So were we looking at having that extra money in special ed and this in case we run into other problems because our budget's so tight? And if we do that, are we tying our hands in the case that something comes up and we have nothing?
So to back up, this is for this year that we're over. Okay, so we're going for appropriation for this year.
We're at negative 122 right now.
Right, so if we leave it open-ended, we could cover more than special ed. Where if we only put money into the expendable trust, we can't use it for anything else. I'm concerned though that the perception is that we're just doing this because we wanna spend money that wasn't appropriated.
Well, they suggested that. It was because it was suggested inappropriately, but.
That's not the case, we need to make it clear.
I, I still see this as two separate issues. This is for overrun, right here. And the special, the number 16 for the education disabled expendable trust fund, we have 105 in that right now. We cannot use that until we've exhausted all the money in. So that's gonna go.
Exhausted all the money in what?
In special ed.
Right.
So that money will, is gonna be used, so we have 0. So we still have to put $100,000 in this one as well as have the expendable trust fund or the override fund.
Yes, they were giving us an either/or.
And we can't have either/or. Because if we, if we, if we put the $100,000 into what they want as part of the override fund, then this leaves this expendable trust with 0 going into FY20. We can't have that as 0 going into FY20.
So my understanding, and this was from talking to Ann, that they had built it up over time. They never put $100,000 in, it was $25,000 a year.
As long as I've been here, it's been 25 a year.
But you also never had 5 people that are coming to take it out either, right, which is new.
Yeah, right.
So while you're, while you're correct that if that other article only contains $25,000 and we're in this same position again next year, we will not be able to go to the expendable trust for any additional funding. So we'll be stuck with what I have here, which is another deficit appropriation to cover anything that might come up. And it might not be special ed, it might be something else. So how would you like to go?
You know, I, I first over is mad. I do not think the budget committee accepts that we are in a deficit position yet. I don't think they are really and truly grasping what we're trying to tell them.
I would like to speak to this one. Because I can just explain to them what I explained to you, which is we know we're going to exceed our appropriation for the 1,200 function. And we are not gonna be able to cover it with just the money that's in the expendable trust. That's why this is here. I can also tell them that we're looking at possible overruns in legal because of a variety of issues that we, that we talked a little bit about when we looked at our legal advice, right? So we have to make the case, and I will make the case, that this is for unanticipated. We didn't know this when we built the budget and we have an obligation to pay it. So quite honestly, if they don't fund this, we have done what we needed to do. Which is tell them this was gonna happen and tell them that we needed a deficit appropriation. If it does not pass, we still have to pay it. We'll just have to go to the superior court, we'll have to petition for a special meeting for a deficit appropriation.
Create more legal fees.
More legal fees and we'll still be more expensive to the town. It's still gonna be more expensive. So I would be happy to speak to this.
So I also, as, as a, to add to that, the budget committee asked for more explanation about what that warrant article was gonna be used for. So I did contact legal, cha-ching, sorry about that. So it was changed, if you look at the page 3 where it has the changes versus the clean copy, it's, it was reworded and added for the current year. So shall this, shall those Wakefield School District vote to raise and appropriate? And this is the sum of 200 and, $200,000 for the current year for the purpose of reducing the general fund deficit, period. And then there's a note. Warrant Article 6 is called a deficit appropriation because the money raised to be funded, to be, it should be, to be funded.
Wait, I'm sorry, if you could just.
To fund it, oh.
Okay, there's the note.
There's a note to Number 6 that was added.
Okay.
Because the money raised to fund it will be included in the tax rate set in the fall of 2019 after the current fiscal year ends. after the current fiscal year ends. So, if there is no deficit, which we know is gonna be-
Please to special ed.
I'm just saying, so if it, if we luck out like we did this year, we will not take, it will be void.
Yeah.
But at least there's money being appropriated.
In case we need it.
And that's correct. That's correct, and it says to raise up to, and this one is correct. This one says up to.
Right.
Because the school board is saying, we have the, we have up to two hundred thousand dollars here, plus if they need to tap into the, the special ed trust fund, they could do that for a total of, let's say, three hundred. But we're not gonna use that money until we close the books, and that the tax be raised until twenty nineteen. I think that addressed, unless the board has a different take on it, addressed what the budget committee's concern was that that means. It wasn't clear initially.
Yeah, it's a lot clearer than what was the original.
Okay.
I mean, you know, obviously, he said you're not legally allowed to, which I believe everybody at the table gets, that we're not legally allowed to go over, which is why there's a theme to our budget proposal, which is why we are at, starting in the hole at six point nine percent, so.
And I can say, when you, when you do a zero budget, you don't have contingencies or wiggle room at all. And you, and we are finding unfortunately that we have contingencies.
You know, a zero budget should've set off alarms, it was not a gift.
So, so we're okay with moving forward the way it was appropriated, it was just the wording that changed, but the intent was the same, right?
So, you would go with the five oh?
Well, that's what I'm asking, the intent is the same, it's just the wording changed, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I think up to doesn't require a vote.
Just clarification, so the five oh's.
It's written here now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
You're good? Okay. Article seven is the budget. Uh, Marie, um, yeah, you were gonna, were you gonna pass it out or just explain?
Well, I'm gonna pass it out so people could follow, because some people are visuals.
Yeah.
So, you've seen this before, it's the budget. The only thing I did was on the last page, we have to gross up the budget when we do the, um, when we put the warrant article in, it's the operating-
Sorry.
It's easier to do.
It's the, it's the operating budget general fund, um, that we know that it's ten million something. Then we have to add food service, and then we have to add grants. That's what ends up going on the warrant article. And that's what I show on the last page of this.
Can you read it? Can you give us the numbers?
It's on the warrant article, read it.
So, article seven.
Um, yeah, you're right, you can't read it. So, um, the gross up is ten million, five twenty-three, nine ninety, which is the ten million, oh forty-five, nine ninety, are people following me?
It's new.
You take the ten million, that's what we've, that's what's been approved.
Yep.
Ten million, oh forty-five, nine ninety, plus, um, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for food service. It's this year's, um, fee, and I just bumped it up five percent. And then the grants, I left it flat, two ninety. So, if you take the one eighty-eight and two ninety, it equates to the four seventy, the four seventy-eight. So, if you take the ten million, um, oh forty-five, nine ninety, plus the four seventy-eight, that's how you come up with the, the gross up of ten million, five twenty-three, nine ninety. And you know what, maybe I'll just add it to this, so it looks better on it. My Annie machine paper has no ink.
So-
Not in the budget.
Is the, the grants and the, just, I'm just a little confused. The grants and the food service is revenue?
Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna continue.
Okay.
So, that's the first part.
It's called a pass-through.
We have to appropriate it and then-
And then take it out.
Yeah, we'll show, I'll show, I'll keep going.
Okay, sorry.
So, if you look at article seven, that ten million, five twenty-three, ninety is the first number you see there. Okay? And then the default. Now, I'm gonna give you the default, and you're gonna have the same problem with the default, because the ink is, you can't see the ink.
It's okay.
So, the default, um, we came up with the default, and, um, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Where you get all this paper?
She brought it from the library.
I start cutting down trees.
Hey, we need that.
Well, I mean, this is what the budget committee's gonna get. The budget committee's getting this, and, and I need, I guess I-
We're gonna go over this tonight, too.
The default budget, so.
So, the default budget, if you go to last page, on page, I think it's eight, the default budget is, um, nine million, seven thirty-eight, five ninety-six. And with the default, I can't add the five, the five percent increase of, from the current, uh, food service contract, so it has to stay flat. So, the current year's food service is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and then the two ninety of grants. Um, so if you take the nine point seven, the one hundred and sixty-seven, and the two ninety, that equates to the other number on the warrant article of the nine million, one-
Ten one.
Ten million, one ninety-five, five ninety-six.
Yep.
With ten what?
Ten million, one ninety-five.
Oh, one ninety-five, ten ninety-six, okay.
And then it continues to go on, so now you know what the, the gross up is of the, um, budget that we can bring forth, the default budget, which is, um, and we'll go over it. And then there's a note that says that, um, of the, of the ten million, five twenty-three, nine ninety, you gotta take out the four seventy-eight, which brings you back to ten million, that's what they're gonna have to raise taxes for, the ten million, oh forty-five, nine ninety. I know it's very confusing.
I got it, no, it's not.
Um, it's the same language that was there last, last year.
Mm-hmm.
And this is very, I mean, if, people should be aware of the process, but that's how we explain it. Am I, was I clear in explaining it?
Perfect, um, and if you remember, we had Mike out there last year to explain gross budgeting again. And we're not gonna have to do that this year, I think everybody understands what Marie just said, which is, you have to add the food service and the grants. Um, and it looks a little different for each one of these budgets. Now, this can change. We don't know on Tuesday night, not Tuesday, it's Wednesday, Wednesday of next week, if this is the budget that the budget committee is actually going to be okay with. So, it's going this way with the numbers that we have right now.
What, says draft on the bottom, says draft?
Yes, says draft.
Well, I mean, I had it across, I had it across the page, and, um, it, it looks, it looks, um, much, much clearer this way. Recommendations to do it this way, and I felt so-
Is there a vote on this one?
Draft. Um, Marie, do you think that they should vote the, the four oh on this?
The what?
That they should vote, I think they should vote the four oh on this.
Oh, well, because this is the first time you're seeing it.
This is your budget, yeah.
This is the first time you're seeing it.
Yeah, you should.
But it's the same as everything else we've done before.
But we didn't have the numbers. I didn't have the gross up numbers.
Okay.
Anybody wanna make a motion on article seven?
Uh, I make a motion to accept the, um, warrant article number seven that the, uh, Wakefield shall gross and appropriate an operating budget of ten million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine ninety, and a default of ten million, one hundred and ninety-five, five ninety-six.
Nice second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Four zero.
Okay, article eight. This is the windows-
Four zero.
You're good?
I just wondered if you should do four zero zero, so that it's clear that one member is-
Okay, that's a good point, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. That makes sense. Article eight is the windows expendable trust fund. Um, this was a five zero and a ten zero, however, they asked to reword it, and we spent a lot of time trying to find the right words, Marie and I, we're not sure we're there. So, what it says now is, for the purpose of replacing, repairing, maintaining windows, and other related window-associated matters, we're hoping you can do better, we couldn't. Remember, they were talking about, well, what about the frame for the door? And what about if there was casing under the window that you had to replace, and what? And so, if, if you can word this better, we would so appreciate it.
I don't even know if DRA is gonna approve it.
I don't think they are.
But this is, this is based on what the budget committee recommended.
What we heard, but I don't know, other related window-associated matters.
Couldn't find any reference to somebody asking for the same thing.
I think we were talking about other things that we couldn't talk about. You know what I'm saying, Jerry?
Security issues.
Security issues.
I agree.
I was, I was talking more about, I didn't want to be caught in the same kind of language issues we had out in the parking lot regarding the new versus old parking lot, when we couldn't address the whole piece. We wanted to make sure we addressed, I wasn't talking about security. I was talking more, we, I was agreeing with that, because it was more about, what, we have to, um, change some, the wood is rotted, you know, where we, when we do the installation, it's not actually a window, but it is gonna be something that's related to the window installation.
Or there's asbestos in the frame of the window, or they pull it out.
But we have another, um, expendable trust to address the asbestos abatement. So, I think that would fall into that.
I'm in him for that.
What about, so you just put, purpose of replacing, repairing, maintaining, somewhere they put all installation costs.
Oh.
Right, if you had to change the trim.
If you, you replace, repair, and maintain.
How's that work?
Because you're, you know, again, yeah.
Maintaining, installing, windows.
Because that would include the trim, because-
And the fact it was rotten.
Yeah.
Can, so take that out.
I think, I like, I like that a lot, can we somehow or other add in also security?
But we do have a security trust.
We have a security.
Well, for the windows.
We don't wanna make it too big, because then it's not for the windows.
I know Jerry doesn't wanna talk about windows in public, so, or security issues in public, so, um, I just wanna make sure we don't tie our hands.
But we, we, do we make it too specific? Does it make a difference if we're replacing them?
Okay, if everybody else is good, I'm good.
If it doesn't, it is not.
Just windows, Jerry?
With, uh, for us, it was the windows and everything that was related to it, and so it was inside and outside. You know, if we have to, if we have to get into the exterior part of it.
Everything related to.
Anything related, I mean, it's-
So, what am I doing here?
I think, should we put materials on there, you know?
This was one of the worst, I used, we spent all afternoon. What's the synonym for?
I was going for it for matters, as soon as I remembered.
Expenses related to installation.
What did you say, 'cause that was good.
The expenses related to installation?
And other expenses-
Wait a minute, so-
Related-
For purpose of replacing, repairing, maintaining.
Windows.
And installing.
And.
And installing.
And other installation expenses?
And all. For the purpose of, all expenses related to-
All expenses.
Replacing, repairing, maintaining, and installing windows.
Windows.
Interior and exterior.
Casings.
But that's part of it, right? Casing is part of the window.
Yeah, just, it's when you're, when you're putting in trim around it.
But isn't, isn't installing, isn't that the same thing?
You'd think so, until we get down to the matter of using the expendable trust, and someone says, well, that you-
It says all expenses.
An improvement. How about replacing, repairing, and maintaining and improving, all expenses related to replacing, repairing?
Wait a minute, all expenses?
I think all expenses should come at the beginning, right?
That's what I'm doing, all expenses.
For the purpose of-
All expenses related to replacing, repairing, maintaining windows?
Windows and, yeah.
And installing, and installing windows, and then that there-
And trim.
Trim, casings.
Well, trip, casings.
And trim related to replacing these windows.
That's what we tried, it said, related windows associated.
I'm looking at these windows here going, what else could go wrong, you know?
Maintaining and installing windows.
All expenses related to, and then blah, blah, blah.
Replacing, repairing, maintaining, and installing, but that's related. All expenses related to replacing, repairing, maintaining-
And installing.
And installing windows.
That's it, right?
Yep.
Do you have that, Marie?
Yeah, I do.
Because I was trying to run the other one. We haven't changed the intent, it was five zero and ten zero, we leave it?
For the purpose of, for, for the purpose, for, the purpose of all expenses related to replacing, repairing, maintaining, and replacing windows.
And installing.
And installing.
And installing.
Replacing and installing.
Placing, repairing, maintaining, and installing.
And installing, I have that already.
Windows.
Windows, that's it.
Yep.
At full school. Thank you.
Intent is still the same.
So, we're gonna let the five oh stand.
Yep.
She said Wakefield School District votes to raise the sum of forty thousand, twenty dollars to be placed in the asbestos abatement room renovation expendable trust. This was a five zero, ten zero, no changes. Correct.
I do have a question. We're seeing, um, room renovation?
Right.
And that includes the twenty-six thousand, that, what, that twenty-six thousand wasn't room renovation, we're, we're turning a hallway into rooms. And that says room renovation, if we want to get technical here.
Actually, I agree with you, but it came from the budget committee that it, it would be considered a room renovation.
But there was, I talked to a budget person, and he, he said, it's not a room. So, I, I'm just putting it out there.
It is a room, is it?
Okay, hold on, it's a hallway, so why don't we, I, I think we should add the hallway.
We can't do that, because the, the trust is already, the trust is already established.
Okay, okay.
Oh, so, one big room.
Yeah. I like the way that, that works, one big room. Um, we're just dividing it into little rooms.
I love that.
Put cushions up for that.
I felt the same way, though. Um, I felt like, eh.
I didn't even, I think for, um, okay.
So, we're, ten, shall the Wakefield School, uh, two hundred thousand to be placed in the Wakefield School Transportation Expendable Trust? God bless Brennan, she actually clarified that number for me tonight. The buses, eighty-five. Uh, we were also gonna replace a van and a car. What she said was, the best way, um, that she would recommend is that we replace the van with a fourteen-passenger small bus, because it's the largest view you can have, which is not need a CDL license. Um, and therefore, it is something that somebody can drive that, um, doesn't necessarily have a CDL license. And she would replace the car with a seven-passenger van. The cost of the bus is sixty-five, the cost of the small van is thirty-five. If you add up eighty-five, sixty-five, and thirty-five, I believe it comes to-
A hundred and eighty-five, you said?
A hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. But her estimates do not include the licensing and any other thing it costs to get those on the road. Therefore, the two hundred was well-thought-out number.
Okay, makes sense.
So, um, we're gonna stay with that number, no change on this article.
Just for you, for me, the, the bus in the fourteen passenger, that includes the camera system that's already in there, but it does not include the radios, which are about a thousand dollars a piece, so.
So, the two hundred-
When it comes up at the meeting, they ask, what's that, oh, what else is that gonna cover? It doesn't cover the cameras, because they're already, part of that, that cost of eighty-five, sixty-five, thirty, uh, thirty-five doesn't get a camera anyway, so.
I think you know as much about buses as I do.
No, anything, anything I know about buses, I learn from everybody, I tell you that right now.
So, buses eighty-five, van to toast, oh, we used to call those toasters, the fourteen-passenger.
Is that at the back express?
Fourteen-passenger, sixty-five toaster bus, because it looks like a toaster, anyway, and car to van, so.
And a car to van.
And also, we did- Uh, thirty-five.
Thirty-five, so it's eighty-five, sixty-five, thirty-five, they're estimates. Um, and we would need additional funds to get them on the road.
Radio room.
Including the radios.
And digital radios.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And all kinds of stuff. Shall the Wakefield vote the gym floor? That was five oh, ten oh, no change.
Well, there was a change in, in dollar value.
Oh, they downed it?
Yeah, from sixty to twenty.
They did, they wanted it to do over five years, I guess, and then instead of two years. You know, what am I saying, three years instead of-
So, we'd have to revote on this.
You have to revote it, or you can not agree with the number. Let's see, what did we have in there first?
Sixty.
Sixty and sixty is a hundred and twenty, it changes it to. So, they've just moved it to-
Twenty.
Extending it out. Extending it out.
Six years instead of two.
You know, it is not a good safe floor. It's tile. These kids are running on tile. They slide all over hell on tile. Kids are licking their hands and rubbing the bottom of their shoes so they don't slide when they're playing basketball. It, it's not. That aggravates the hell out of me.
What, does anybody have a?
How much is the, how much is the, the floor, sixty thousand?
That's what was originally in there.
That was.
It was a hundred and twenty.
It's a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, it was given three years.
If you're sixty thousand.
They asked Joe at the meeting, and he did say we could put it off.
Yeah, cause he doesn't have kids running on it.
He did say that at the meeting.
Well, I think he's used to, he also said they would never give him a card.
Bob left, but he had MCLs from the, from gym class.
Well, if we did three years, it'd be forty a year, forty, eighty, honestly. If we did thirty instead of twenty, it would be a four-year floor. Does anybody have?
Well, can I make a suggestion? I'm, I'm just gonna, an observation. If we, if the board chooses, changes this number again, is that go before the budget committee again? And I don't know what the vote would be if it gets changed, if they would recommend it or not. Just, just, just in the process of thinking it through, that's something to think about.
This is another one that we could, um, talk to at deliberative session and explain it was lowered. And that we really think the sixty is there, um, and anyone in the audience, if they so choose. Could put it out there for the audience, to whoever shows up, to vote for it. And, and, and that would go through the voters. So that can be changed in deliberative session.
Can't they make the motion? The board members?
They can.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm, yes, but I'm just.
Deliberate session.
Yes, but.
So you don't even have to wait for somebody in the audience. You can.
I've never seen them do it before.
I was wondering how I could.
Don't you have to step off of the board and do it on the floor?
You have to go to the microphone and.
No.
I was just here wondering if I could do that.
Well, I'm gonna check for you, but I'm.
Well, you're still a taxpayer, right?
Yeah, I, um.
Wow, that was, that was very good, Sandy. That was a good question.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay. So. You're gonna leave it the way it is?
So I think we need to, we need to vote for it, whether we approve it or not.
I approve the change. Originally, you approved the sixty thousand. So now you have to determine if you're gonna change, if you, you agree with the budget committee's recommendation to use.
So how does that show, though? So here, like, if I don't agree with the change.
Then, then it would be four, four, one, zero, or four.
No, when, this is my.
Three, three, one.
It would be three, one, zero.
But then, but I want the, I want the money.
You want the six, you want the sixty thousand.
I don't wanna vote for the change, but I wanna vote for the, I want taxpayers to vote the article in.
So it was explained to me because I sat there and I voted no to all of the changes, but then when they put money in, I did vote yes, cause otherwise it was gonna be zero. So I had to vote yes. I actually voted yes, um, for this. I'd voted no to the change.
Yes.
Like, nine to one.
That doesn't show anywhere, right?
No, it's in the minutes. There is minutes.
So I voted no to the change, and then I did vote yes, because otherwise it would've been.
It wouldn't show up. That was my question. Right?
Which was, and then there was, uh, people here, like, if I voted no, it'd have been seven to three, it would have been closer to having, not even making it to this page.
Right.
So in order to get it to the deliberative, we have to vote for it, which was painful. I didn't want to vote for it.
Exactly.
It was. It was hard to vote for something you don't want to see.
Deliberative session.
You'll stand up and do something.
Well, you have people that will say, when they see that, or didn't approve it and one didn't, they will ask why the board didn't. Or if they saw that certain peo, that the vote wasn't unanimous, why were there some negative votes?
Or somebody could take that one or speak to it, and then, and while they speak to it, they could indicate that originally the board recommended sixty, and these are reasons why.
Exactly, yes.
And that could even be next Tuesday and at the public hearing.
That's correct. Going forward. So what are we doing with Article eleven as the board recommendation?
We need to vote.
I'm, do we, I make, does somebody need to make a motion? I make a motion to, um, sorry, I lost my place here.
Eleven.
Oh, thank you. Uh, to establish a gym floor trust fund for RSA one ninety-eight, twenty, C one, for the purpose of repair, repairing, replacing, and maintaining the gym floor, and to raise the appropriate sum of twenty thousand dollars.
I second it.
So leave it the way it is?
Well, everybody's gonna vote now.
Now we vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's gonna be.
No, we're not voting, if, if you, if you wanted, you vote for it. If you don't, you vote in the negative.
But then it comes off of the sheet. Then it doesn't even make it to the deliberative session.
Guess it will.
So who's voting in favor?
Well, wait a minute, we have to do it again. Let me, I, I withdraw my motion. Uh, I withdraw it.
Well, let's discuss it.
Somebody gonna second it, so.
No, let's just discuss it for a minute.
So the way it works is we have voted, we've made a motion. Now, we're, are we voting that we agree with what it was taken down to, cause our original intent was sixty thousand? They've put one at twenty thousand. So are you voting yes, you're gonna go along with, with the, with the, with the, uh, budget committee said? Or you're voting no, you want it.
A different one.
A different one, amount of money. And this will go forward to the voters, if it, if the money, if it changes.
We can get something on there with a different number than the budget committee puts on there, though. So even though, like, I hate this and I want it to be sixty thousand. I have to vote yes just to get this one article out there in front of the voters.
It still will be, it will still be out there in front of the voters.
But when you read it, you, you will be, it will be perceived as you don't recommend the twenty.
Right.
But it won't be perceived as you're recommending a higher number.
Right.
Yes, see, right.
Do we need to get it on there? Ask for more.
Right. So we have to say yes to get it there, and then tell them at deliberative session?
And the public hearing.
Next, uh, you can do it next Tuesday, then we'll give it down. Deliberative session, all of them.
So you're saying if we vote no, the voters will think that we don't want any money at all?
Correct.
See, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at it that way.
It was hard to be up there to.
Because, because what I would do as a, a member of the audience, I would say, why did you vote no? And you'd give our, your explanation of why. That would explain to me why you voted no, and I'd move on.
But I think most of the people who will see this, maybe in a booth, they're not gonna be at that thing, and they're gonna see that the school board doesn't recommend twenty thousand dollars for the gym floor. They're not gonna see anything that says we recommend sixty thousand.
You're both right.
Right, it's a hard discussion.
But I think most people don't show up to, unfortunately, to the deliberate and speak and answer.
And I guess we want twenty rather than nothing.
Nothing.
I don't know if, why couldn't they?
Why couldn't we pick a number?
Why?
But, uh, we, I, you know, I.
I'm gonna take it a step back a little bit further. So they voted no to the sixty. Why did they get to change the number?
Because they're recommending twenty.
Oh, I know that, but what if?
They have control over the budget.
I know you asked this question, did that?
It hasn't come back to me yet, but, um, basically, they do have control over monetary things, uh, and, including the warrant articles. It's how the warrant articles are worded, and that's what I'm waiting for, is a ruling on the wording.
So they said, if you put twenty in there, you have a ten-zero vote. If you put another number in there, you can do that, but you're not gonna get a ten-zero vote necessarily. And so it might be a zero-ten vote, do you know what I mean? So the number goes with their support of the warrant article.
And then you could speak to it, and then you could speak to it.
So it's really a support. Do we support the way it's being, the twenty thousand that's being awarded?
No, of course, none of us here, we're struggling because we do not support extending the gym floor out five years for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. None of us do.
Right.
So, um.
Can we change it back? Let's, listen now.
Back to sixty?
No, I wouldn't go back to sixty, cause we knew they're not gonna do that.
But then it's gonna have to go back to the budget committee.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, and they, they say no, and then that's what's gonna be brought forward. And that's gonna keep going back and forth. We got, at some point, we have to decide, and we can't keep going back and forth. We're really getting late in the game here.
Why don't we stick with the twenty, try to end, try to.
That's right.
That's where I'm going to.
Go, speak to it.
Somebody make a motion on that.
All right. Should I do it again?
You already had one.
Yeah, it's still on the floor.
Yeah, but she pulled it back.
I did pull it back, all right.
But nobody seconded that.
Right. I make a motion to, um, the Wakefield School District to vote to establish a gym floor expendable trust fund for RSA one ninety-eight, twenty, C one, for the purpose of repairing, replacing, and maintaining the gym floor. And to raise the appropriate sum of twenty thousand dollars to be placed in the fund, and further designate the school board as agents to expend from the fund.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
So it's gonna be four, it's gonna be three, one, one, right?
Well, no, just three, one, zero, yeah.
No, oh, yeah, three, one.
Three, zero, one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's only four people.
Three, one, zero.
That's okay?
Thank you. Three, one, zero.
Yep, we wanna get it right, so.
Three, one, zero. Okay, the next one, um, is the expendable trust for zero, blah, 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 roof repair. Um, they zeroed this out. Your choice is to remove it if you, um, don't want it up there.
That was one of the things I asked the budget committee, if you remember. If, if it's zero, and if the school board so wishes to keep it there, you may wanna speak to it again at the deliberate session at public hearing. Or if you wanna forfeit it, we could remove it completely off of that.
Well, they allow, they, they won't allow us to have it, is a, a warrant article, zero dollar, and we'll say, yeah?
But it keeps it there, right?
And we should all vote against it.
Right, we should now have to go zero.
Five.
There, there was a point during this, this, I, I believe we all felt it, that, that it really went poorly for us, and, um, we, we were outclassed or, or basically.
Bullied?
Bullied. That was an excellent word, and none of us really are capable of doing what was done to us. Um, the explanation that, uh, we don't look out for the future of our school, the future of our children, the future of our citizens, I thought was amazing. Uh, I was absolutely, if you don't set aside money for your future, um, these kids are gonna wind up with three hundred thousand dollars, or who knows what it is in thirty years or forty years. And they can't put money toward their education. It's all gonna have to go, once again, to the roof. Or we could do the right thing and set money aside for a roof. You know, ten thousand dollars. One of the budget members, which I thought was, asked a very good question, saying, could we give the logistics? Meaning, what are you saving for how long? This is ten thousand dollars for thirty years, for three hundred thousand dollars. So that the future of Wakefield doesn't go through what we went through, doesn't go through with the bridges, and doesn't go through everything else that, that we go through here. Because money hasn't been set aside for our generation. Um, and I didn't, I, I, at this point, I was, I, I think I, I was speechless.
I think we can speak to those things, and I think it's a mindset, and I, I was, I've, I've spoke to Chris, and we disagree on this. I think we need to fight when we're standing there and not just take the blows. I'm a fan of if you get punched in the face, you punch back, and.
We were shell shocked.
Not, well, no, it's, we've had the, the discussion, and, right, and you don't feel that it's the right thing to do.
It is true. I do, I feel that I treat everybody with dignity and respect, and I don't, I don't engage just because they're being the way they are on their level.
But you can, you can engage with facts.
Sure.
And, and fight back, not just sit there quietly and shake your head and take it. You tell them that this is why we need it, and this is what happens.
As the liaison, I didn't even, I didn't respond. I don't think I ever expected an explanation of, we've taken care of ourselves, pull up the ladders. I don't think I ever, ever, I don't even think I knew how to respond to not responsibly protect the future of the town. So, um, I would like to address this, this one to the budget committee, because I would like to think that there are people on the budget committee. That do wanna protect the future of Wakefield and don't want to allow the school to wind up, sorry, Sandy. Do, does that, that, we, we don't want to keep doing the same thing over and over again, where you don't have money for buses, and you don't have money for bridges, and you don't have money for the roof, and it, it's, it's daunting, sorry.
This would be a great article for you to speak to. Leave it on, you can speak to it.
Um, I do have to say, when I moved up from Dover here, that's one thing I liked, was that they did put aside money for, in the future, which didn't happen in a larger city. And it seems like we're, we are going backwards in certain areas in this town, which makes me very sad. However, on this one, I don't think we can allow it to be zero. I think we need to do a monetary thing. What if we had a, a, something go wrong? I mean, we've had roof repairs, but just because it's new.
Warranty, that's what I'm gonna say.
Doesn't mean, doesn't, you know, doesn't mean something needs, has to be done.
Like, we talked about the thirty-year warranty.
Oh.
Actually, I think I heard it was fifty.
Let me tell you about thirty-year warranties.
Yeah.
I, I, I just had to put a new roof on my house last year. My house is only fourteen years old, and had a thirty-year warranty, yeah, so, you know.
I'm just saying, we could bring it up in the meeting.
But that is, I believe.
And I don't, I don't think we can leave it at zero.
Okay.
Um, I'm not, they don't like the ten. I, I feel comfortable with the ten, but they don't like the ten. I'd be willing to do seven, put seven into it, or five.
How could we answer, along your lines, to the budget committee member that you were speaking of, I can't think of his name, who wanted just some backup? I mean, he was the most reasonable person there. When he voted against something, it wasn't just like, ah, it was, well, what's your plan, what's your?
Yes, that was another thing I wanted to bring up. It was a very good question.
Is there something that we could do, um, maybe?
We would ask, ask Joe. You know, what are the things that we've needed for roof repairs? That could be potential, that are covered by the warranty, cause I don't think we need, I don't think, not to have that expendable trust fund, and, and have.
Is irresponsible.
It's unconscious, irresponsible.
Disg臓ly irresponsible.
Well, a small number, because we do have a, a big warranty on that, a small number would, would help anyways.
Maybe Joe could speak to the contractor and find out what's not covered. That could happen, right? Would that be reasonable? So speak to the contractor with the roof on, who could then in turn even speak to the manufacturer of the roof shingles and find out what could happen that's not covered.
But that's not the whole, that's only a certain section that was, was redone.
Roof was done.
Yeah.
It was a five-year plan. And what, what was, what was the price?
It was like fifty thousand dollars a year, or close to forty-something thousand dollars.
It did vary. We had, we had. Warranty too. Yeah.
But there's always something that's not covered.
Yeah, there are.
Oh, they could be out of business.
As it gets further out, there's things that aren't covered.
We're talking forty years from now, you know, they could be out of business, but, um.
This is the one, though, that you guys answered correctly. It was, and I don't know who said it.
Right, it, ten years.
It was correct. It was, we're saving for a roof, we're going to put ten thousand dollars away for the next.
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
So there's three hundred thousand dollars.
So that we can replace the roof. That was answered correctly.
That's right.
The budget committee just didn't agree. And I don't think you can make a case better, and it was exactly, was that Sappala that said this?
Yes.
Yes.
That was exactly what he said. You gotta know what you're saving for, you gotta know why you're doing it the way you're doing. And I thought that was, I thought that was the one thing, it did really, really well. Not the one thing, but one of the things.
Well, you know, we could do, here's the thing, we could, we could ask for five, and then next year, bump it back to ten.
Hmm.
Something like that. So this year, we, we keep it alive because it's simply the right thing to do, and, um.
Twenty-five hundred. I mean, you could just.
It'd be a hundred years.
Well, you can keep it open with, you can keep it open with zero.
Like, it's like our roads, let's do it thirty years on. No, I agree, keeping it alive. Bob, I'm just laughing.
So I haven't, I'm sorry. So if we change that number, that means we gotta go through another vote.
Okay.
Okay. So if you leave it here, the way it is, and you, you vote against it negative, okay, then you could speak to it. And then somebody could change that number.
I get the feeling that that's the more direct route to take, because we are up against time constraints, and we have, we're bringing this stuff in kinda late. So the budget committee has clearly told us that they are not happy with, um, the stuff that wasn't there on time and us running late.
It was on time last week.
I understand that. I was just putting it on this in camera.
It was on time.
Public speaking.
Okay.
Okay, I know it was on time. Um, grew little legs. And, um, but they, that's what they had a problem with, was, you know, they, they want everything done. So if we vote for it now, and then we speak to it, maybe we can adjust it then.
At the meeting?
Yeah.
At, at, at Wednesday's meeting?
So we vote it down and we speak to it?
They're saying we can do it Wednesday's meeting and, was it a Saturday? It's Saturday, the second or the twenty-second of February.
Well, one C is a, one, one C's meeting is, is a, is a budget committee. We can't, we can't.
That's just our thing.
You can speak to it, but nobody can change the number at that point.
Right.
It's, uh, at the public hearing on the eighth, and then at the deliberate session on the second, the Saturday, right, second.
Yes.
So those are two places that that number could change.
But it wouldn't be coming from us, it'd be coming from the public.
That's correct. But, um, some, or you could, I don't know. I'm staying out of it.
I would, I guess, I guess if we had to vote, I would definitely vote no to this. It, it's zero, so that would be, and we can address it in a couple different places going forward, right?
I think that's the best route. What do you think, Sandy?
I think it's great for them.
Leave it the same right now?
No.
I really, I don't have a monetary figure in there.
Oh, you wanna put a monetary figure in now?
Hmm.
Um.
Let's just vote.
Twenty-five hundred?
Let's vote on that. Why don't we? Whether we put a monetary, whether we change it or not, so. You have to ask us, right?
Want me to make it, or Sandy, you wanna make the motion? Want me to?
I make a motion to change Article twelve, so the Wakefield School District raise an appropriate sum of, change zero to, um, twenty-five hundred, uh, two thousand five hundred dollars. To be placed in the Wakefield School District Roof Repair Expendable Trust Fund, previously established in two thousand one for roof repair replacement.
Do it a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But can I just understand why you're saying no?
Because I don't agree. She, she wants to change the number and I don't wanna change the number.
Oh, okay.
I wanna just hit it head on verbally.
And speak about it?
I do.
I think we're gonna get to speak about it either way because we changed it, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's whether we wanna spar with them or not.
I won't spar.
Dad can spar.
I won't.
Okay, if we're gonna, I, 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 so three, one.
Oppose.
Okay.
Three, one?
Three, one, zero. So what?
Twenty.
Changing.
Change to twenty five hundred.
So you're gonna do it?
So three, one.
Zero.
So then I got, then the budget committee's gotta change it too.
And we take out the eight, two for the budget committee. And then we vote it.
So it's three, one, zero.
Thirteen.
To twenty five hundred.
Thirteen. Security expendable, expendable trust fund. I have to look at whether this was changed or not.
That was not changed, but there was no vote taken.
Why?
On fourteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, no, they didn't.
I have to go get the minutes. Do you have the minute? You have the, oh, I have the minute.
Oh, it was something, was it something they were gonna look at? I think this is one of the areas where they basically said, why five thousand dollars and, um, it's, I think. When it was decided upon that the amount would be twenty five thousand dollars to update the, um, all the security cameras. That go out of date in five years.
Could be anything.
Anything.
My recollection was that we had a conversation around the SRO and thinking that we were going to take the money out of the. That expendable trust for the SRO and that when they said, no, you don't even have to pay for that. Officer this year, then there was a question of, then do we really need the money in the expendable trust if we already have so much in it? And the amount we have in it is.
Seventy nine thousand.
Thank you, seventy nine thousand. So, um, why would we put additional money in when our thought was that we had to pay for the SRO?
Right, right. And actually, my confusion was, are, is their year starts January? No, it couldn't because we, we don't even vote until March.
But they start in January. They actually do retro.
They do? Okay, so they're saying they're putting it in for January and I, and I keep thinking June. So for me. I kept thinking, we have to pay for January. So I get why we don't have to use it. I actually agree. Since they're putting it in there, they're absolutely right. We don't and we do have the eighty or seventy nine left in the, um, SRO. Because their fiscal year starts January one.
Okay, so you want, you wanna, do you want me to read the minutes or not?
Sure.
Mr. O'Connell read the article. Mr. Knight said, the fund has seventy nine thousand five eighty eight. After discussion about. The article and no real plans for the requested five thousand dollars, the budget committee, no action on the article.
Which we have eighty in the, um, other one, so I, I do suppose I get the, now I get the point. Initially I kept thinking. But it's retro for them, June, right, June, January one. So, um, if in, so.
You have eighty in what other one?
In this one.
The SRO, the security fund, the SRO.
In our budget at all, the SRO.
We were getting from the spendable trust fund.
It, it's really fiscal years that were.
Yeah.
The issue here.
Yeah.
They're going, we thought we had to use ours for January for the rest of the year because that's our fiscal year. When in fact, the town starts in January.
Mm-hmm.
So we thought we would have to empty our SRO account or the security account. So the point is actually accurate. We don't need to fill this because our security is gonna stay intact at seventy nine five eighty eight. Because the town is covering the expense starting right away.
We made off of the budget though.
But there's still seventy nine in the trust fund.
Oh, for this year, okay.
So, I think, I, I, I think we can.
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone, right?
Leave it alone. It stays five thousand going into the trust?
No, you, you want me to keep it intact the way it is?
Yeah, they're the only ones who didn't vote on it. And if they would vote to put it in there, I wouldn't argue the point, right? Is that the case? But I.
So what I heard in the minutes is, what's your plan?
There's no expla, there's no plan for it. So that, that's why they decided to take.
So what, they wanna eliminate that one?
Well, they didn't take action because there was no discussion of what to do with that. What was, what was the plan with the five thousand dollars that was being requested?
So, let me go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I say, since the seventy nine five eighty eight is intact, we let this one go. Right?
Take it up.
Take it up.
Mm-hmm. So thirteen will be gone. Can we vote on that? Can we vote on removing one article?
We may try to remove.
Okay, I make a motion to withdraw Article thirteen, that the Wakefield District, uh, vote, uh, School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars. To be placed in the Wakefield School District Updating and Improving Security Expendable Trust Fund. I'm sorry, should I leave a dollar in? Should I make it four thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars to leave it open?
Your decision.
I don't know that the, I don't know that they're interchangeable. I would say, let's leave the dollar in it.
It'll, it'll stay there because you already have seventy nine thousand, just will not be on the, you know, it's not like a budget item.
So it'll still be there.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I get it.
It's already established.
Okay, so.
Zero.
Zeroed out. Uh, so withdraw the five thousand dollars. Um, so we're removing the Warren article?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thirteen is gone.
Yep.
All in favor?
I.
Aye.
So that's four, zero, zero.
Fourteen.
So fourteen will now be thirteen.
But not yet.
Okay.
Let's just stick with our numbers for now.
This one, okay, by the board and the budget committee, no changes from the amount asked the last time. You're good there. Fifteen. Uh, sixteen thousand five hundred to be placed in the, they changed the amount. It was twenty six, five. They reduced it to sixteen, five. We had said that in this was the, uh, renovation of the hallway, right? No.
This is the SAU one.
This is the SAU one.
So they're re, they're replenishing what we're taking out. We're replenishing a portion of, we're taking out like over twenty something thousand dollars.
I'd like to keep their recommendation.
Okay.
I mean, they did nine one.
But you have to vote on the change.
On the new.
Yeah.
Cause the intent is changed. I mean, the number's changed.
Oh, the six, the sixteen five?
Yeah, it was twenty five.
Yeah.
It was twenty five.
Uh, I make, is there more discussion? I make a motion to, um, change Article fifteen, uh, to vote and raise and appropriate the sum of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. To be placed in the SAU Office Capital Reserve Fund. Established in two thousand eighteen for the purpose of building, repair, maintenance and equipment at SAU. Yes.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye. Seven, seven, four, oh, oh.
Sixteen.
Uh, some of one hundred thousand to be added to the educational handicap expendable trust. I think this one was tabled.
Do you want me to read you? I think they.
It was tabled.
It was tabled because of the, they want explanation for the Warren Article six.
Right.
This is one I want to move.
To eight, to, to where we just took off?
I, I want, I want, I want to be moved, um. I think I'd like this one to be number eight and remove everything down.
That's what we talked about last time, right? This one makes sure, because I, we don't wanna, we didn't wanna confuse people.
And the reason why I'm doing the Warren article is because it's an important piece to our students. And it needs to be upfront and not at the end of the Warren articles.
And why no vote?
Cause they, they wanted to make sure, they wanted clarification how it was related to Warren Article number six.
And they also, and they also were leaning, this is my opinion, we're leaning towards, we already have a hundred and five and it, why would we put another hundred thousand in it?
So you want this to go to number eight? You want this above the windows for, for security? Oh, I disagree. Security comes first in my mind.
Do you want it to be number nine? Is where is, where are the windows?
Eight.
Sandy, we want it to be number nine. I think the reason, the reason that we are discussing.
From everything, everything down past eight deals with.
So, so below eight you want it?
No, she wants it bottom.
I want it to be eight and everything else, because everything else from what I can see deals with, with infrastructure, not students. And I think this is important because we had five students out of district, which is likely that they're gonna be out of district maybe next year as well. And we need that money.
The reason that there's no vote, if I remember correctly, is because they wanted us to do either or. They wanted us to do the two hundred thousand. Or the one hundred thousand, but not both.
Because they don't understand that the hundred and five is already spoken for.
I agree.
And if we, if we don't put money back in, we have zero and we'll be at the same place we are now, next year. And I don't wanna be there.
Is that the two hundred ninety, what are you talking about? So do seven and eight, seven and, so you wanna do. The, you, you're talking to number seven is the one you're talking about. They were, that's the one that they were fighting with us on, seven and.
No, seven is not what they were doing.
What's the one that they're.
Six is, we would like, if, if we exhaust all our funds, we would like.
They were doing number ten.
To, to raise two hundred thousand dollars to cover, up to two hundred thousand dollars. It's number six. And the reason they didn't vote on this hundred thousand is they think that we covered any shortage with number six. We believe we are gonna be short two hundred and.
Right, I, I get it. I just wasn't sure. I'm, I'm talking placement, but I still think that it's too far up to go.
I'm good with, with, I, whatever you guys work out.
So can I read what the, so can I read what the minute said? The minute said, Mr. O'Connell read the article. After much discussion about the budget deficits in the current and future years. It was decided to table this further discussion until such time as Article six is resolved. So that doesn't appear as either or. There may have been discussion about that.
I felt like what they were saying was, use the defo, the, the deficit spending Warren article first. And then go to the.
Trust fund.
Trust, if you need more.
But we're probably gonna need to go to that trust, which means we need to replenish the money in it.
I'm sorry. I think you're right.
Yeah, but I mean, I think that's what the trust fund says too, was when everything else is exhausted.
Yeah.
I don't know that we care what gets used first.
When everything else is, is exhausted, does that include the Warren article of those deficits?
That's not the way the Warren article for the expendable trust is written. It's written for overruns of special education, period. So it doesn't say anything about exhausting the budget. In fact, you don't even have to, if you have any unanticipated expenses. You could tap that trust.
You can.
Even if you haven't exhausted the, uh, lines.
Alright.
How many students do we get this year?
We had five unanticipated. Um, I have, we're not talking about budget right now, but I have budgeted. For less next year with some reasons. I've talked about it at, I think our first meeting around the budget. But this is where it's really hard to hear someone, anyone, no matter where they're coming from, say. You're hiding money in special ed. Anyone could move in tomorrow or move out. And when someone moves in or when someone moves out, I always let the board know. So, but I don't let the budget committee know. I don't let, you know, I let the board know, non-public. So and so moved, we're gonna be less in total. So, I, I can't argue that, I'm not gonna, um, to, to hear you're hiding money in special ed, just.
Was insulting. No, it was.
It, it just.
Well, Anne, I think that, that it's reflected in what happened in eighteen, at the end of eighteen. This, the twelve hundred line had over two hundred thousand, thousand dollars left because that same scenario.
Right.
So that proves the point, proves your point. And then this year, the flip happened. So, um, we didn't anticipate returning, and that's what saved us last year. That saved the district.
I remember, I remember well. But not this year. No one's clapping for me this year.
Oh, we all are. You know, I, I, you can't, you know, give names out, you can't do a lot of things, but I do believe. The board has tried to address with the partners program where we can start to take charge. Of some of the out of district placements. So by your recommendation. To try and take control of some of the costs through the partner program, so. I guess, do we just wanna leave this then? Just leave it tabled? Cause we pretty much.
I think we had a fight for it. I mean, we just said, we just had.
No, they just have no vote.
I know, so we need to bring it back and say, we stick with this.
Really would rather, for interest for people voting on it, at, 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 um, voting day. I'd rather that be further up the list than at the end of the list.
Can we move it to nine? You okay with that?
I really think it needs to be above anything that deals with infrastructure.
The windows are a security issue.
Dealing with kids. And like Anne said, one person comes in and, you know, let's, we have, let's say, just as a scenario, we have someone come in.
Make a motion, Sandy.
Well, can, can we, wait, we can't discuss this further?
We can discuss it.
Because what, he, he's saying too, the windows are a security issue. That's for everybody. It's not just, oh, we need windows that's drafty or the heat's coming in, the cold's going out.
I understand that, but I, that's.
It's a safety matter, you know.
It's, it's just my opinion that I'd like to put, you know, I, I'd like to see.
Sandy, go ahead and make a motion again.
Okay. Wait, hold on a second though. If she makes a motion, I want them both there. Eight or nine. I, I, I'm not really all, I don't have a lot of strong preference, other than I wanna make sure. I don't care which way they go.
Let's just do this one inside. Sandy, you wanna make a motion to move that to Article eight?
Yes.
And make that motion.
You made the motion?
No, I'm asking her to make that motion. She wants to.
I, I make a motion to move Article sixteen, shall the Wakefield School District raise an appropriate sum of one hundred thousand dollars. To be added to the educationally disabled children expendable trust fund previously established to, uh, Article eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a side comment. If there's ever a chance to change that language, educationally disabled children is so politically incorrect. It's unpolished.
Well, why don't we do it now?
So you can't. I'm told that only trustees can change.
Was it meant to humor you, but I do realize that we do have to go through a process to change it, but we could make a suggestion. It is enormously inappropriate.
The maintenance contingency expendable trust, um, I believe they changed the amount. On seventeen. Yes. And I can't read through the writing. It went from twenty to ten. Um, so are you comfortable with reducing that to ten thousand? And this is the one that Marie referred to that, did Joe say that? Was it better, yeah. Joe had no problem with it. Anne's fault.
It was twenty.
Okay.
Went from twenty to ten.
Um, did we, I know we asked for, um, to raise two hundred thousand dollars if we don't meet our expenses for this budget. Did we do it for the ensuing budget? This is a tight budget as well. Is that in here for, to request it at the end of this one or do we have to wait a year?
You have to wait a year and do it all over again.
Yep.
As long as they understand we might be back at the table. I mean, this is a tight budget.
But the thing that bothered me about this is when people come from the school, and, and the math program as well. When people come from the school to talk to us, who are not in the school on a regular basis. They should come in with the number that they need to get by and not a number that when questioned in front of the budget committee, they're going to drop. Because that, I, they just lost all credibility in front of me for that. So the next time someone comes to me and says, I need twenty thousand for this, I'm gonna probably write five, right? Because that made us look foolish. We trusted that, um, math, because they were in the audience and gave us that number. And this, anything that he had asked for, that he dropped during that me, meeting. We trusted that he gave us the low number that we needed and that he needed to get by and that they needed. So I just wanted to say that I was unhappy with that.
I agree. So, uh, I would say if he accepted it, we don't have any real, my feeling is.
I'm with you.
Alright.
She has to re-vote it.
Wanna make a motion?
Sure, make a motion to, oh, sorry, do you want to make a motion? Wakefield School District, uh, vote to establish a maintenance contingency expendable trust fund per RSA one ninety eight twenty C one. For the purpose of covering unanticipated building repairs, maintenance and equipment and to raise the appropriate sum of ten thousand dollars to be placed in the fund. And further designate the school board as agents to expend.
Oh, second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's Article seventeen, right?
The last one, um, is the, uh, article where we could, um, save two and a half percent of the current fiscal year's net assist assessment.
Did they understand it?
I think so.
No, but, no, it is a lot of trouble and you do have to do it every year. And, um. I, I don't know how you wanna go. Do you wanna try and re-explain it? Uh, do you want to? Cause they voted, uh, two yes, eight no.
Committee.
So I think the, I think that because of the procedure in order to access this money. Um, is a little bit, is difficult.
Cumbersome?
As well, but, and because this district has money in trust funds. So in order to access this money, if it gets voted on, all your trust funds have to be depleted first.
Oh.
So, so, so I think, I think, I think that's part of some of the concern. So, so you have to show that you, all your other revenue sources have been, have been exhausted. And then you have to go to the commissioner to, to, you have to have a budget committee hearing, you have to have a public hearing, then you have to go to the commissioner. So I think the process is cumbersome, as the district has said.
I also wanted this out here to reinforce that we, um, are probably going to be in positions where we're going to need money at the end of. Of a year. Um, but wasn't really committed to this being the vehicle to do it.
Is there another vehicle?
No, well, the deficit appropriation piece is the other vehicles. Yeah, and.
So we don't need both?
Well, it'd be nice to have them, but the, I agree, the process that we could use this by. Probably, um, not be our first choice.
The thing that makes it attractive to a voter is that it's really hard to get to. And we'd only get to it if we absolutely needed it. I mean, that's, that's why it's attractive. I mean, that's, that's why it's attractive, because I don't want you to use it.
It's a safety net, that's all it is, is a safety net, because as it was pointed out, it is illegal to overspend. So it is a safety net.
Right, right, so.
Can only be accessed.
Can leave it in.
Yeah.
I could do a commentary over here. I think we need to, um, I think, I, I think that's what makes it good.
So there's no harm, no foul leaving it there.
But are we gonna stand and fight for it? I'm not equipped to fight for that.
I think just explaining it, um, is difficult. I remember you did a great job on, on doing that part.
Who knows, the voters may like it. We voted for it, the budget committee voted, if it doesn't fly, it doesn't fly.
Right.
To go back, we tomorrow are going to send this out to the budget committee. When it gets presented on the second, which is Wednesday.
Wednesday that this budget committee.
Wednesday, January second, that budget committee is meeting. Would you like to have different people speaking to these as they come up, or do you wanna just kind of play it by ear?
If, if we can understand the way we speak to the, each of these, that's some, they're pretty difficult, some of them.
Okay, would you like to do it for the public hearing, and pick them now or later? Wanna pick them later?
Later.
Okay, got it?
Later, but yes, I do think we should be able to pick and be able to speak on all of the articles, yes. And we can even need to maybe assign them, so we're all, know which ones we're talking about.
Funny gets more.
She's not here, step forward.
Okay, that's number one. So, thank you, hold on, um.
I don't even know.
The shape that I had.
Yeah, I'm free.
We're not gonna slip. For members here, information to be shared with the budget committee on special ed. Very funny.
Hi Anna, I'm next. Little. So, I'm asking out something that, um, I'm gonna say it again, I say it all the time, I, my expertise is not Excel, so I will clean these up, if you want me to send this along to the budget committee.
Excel's so much fun though.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take one and pass it. I learned that from you, Gordon.
You did?
I did, there we go. Oh, good, this is very helpful. I, I think your Excel is just fine.
Your Excel goodness.
She brought more cheese.
Yes, I did ten, so this should be enough. So, do you want me to start?
Go for it.
So the, the top piece is just our current enrollment numbers, if, if December one counts. The next section, special education budget process, so on November.
So is this everyone with a IEP? Or is it the IP and the five oh four?
No, five oh fours included.
Okay, just IEPs.
I could put five oh four, the number five oh four.
On the left side we have, but I think that's kind of confusing to the budget, I don't think it's well understood, five oh fours. It's just IEP.
Just.
Sorry.
So. Oh, I, I'm gonna have to repeat this, and Sandy's not in here now.
We can push her out for another five minutes if you want.
Um, so, when I did the, when I do my budget, the first thing I do, my first process in doing the special ed budget, is to look at my actuals, and put them into my budget, my actuals. Contracted services, distracted learning center, I always increase by three percent. So it was a Friday, November second, when I saw what the budget looked like, and I saw that my budget was up by two hundred thousand, and salaries, and anything Marie had to be, put, had to put in, wasn't in. So, I, um, I'm a strong believer in all means all. It's a philosophy we have in our school. All means all is that we provide what we need to for all students to be successful. With that being said, I work really hard to try not to have regular ed against special ed. I say to teachers all the time, you can't have a wall between regular ed and special ed, because then we don't all, it doesn't, all doesn't mean all. We're all in this together. So I'm really encouraging us to send that message, that when I, when I, I know, I understand how people feel about the fact that special ed is driving this budget right now. So on that Friday, when I saw that the, the cut, the, my numbers were that high, I went home for the weekend and spent the weekend looking at IEPs, and trying to make decisions on cutting the budget, before it came to you for the first time. And what I did was I cut enough money out, I, I cut money out of special ed contracted services. With, in my mind, I researched what it would cost for us to hire our own occupational therapist. It's a starting place to, to, to hire our own instead of contract services. Um, I looked at the, um, I, I cut speech and language numbers, I decreased it by one, so right now we have two full-time contracted service, we have two point three full-time contracted services, people. I'm looking, this cut means that I'm looking at going down to one full-time, one point three full-time equivalent speech-language pathologist, and hiring our own speech-language assistant. So you're cutting the speech-language pathologist down to one point three. Are you following me?
So we're going back to having a speech assistant like we used to?
Um, that's, when I made these cuts, that's what I am considering. This is missing the, um, oh, so then I, um, I say, attach, um, special ed contracted services out of district costs and partner program. So I have to revise this a little, cause I didn't put out of districts, but let's look at page one of this very small print.
Hold that for me, Marie.
I can see it.
So, what you see is what my actuals were for this year, in special ed contracted services. What I had in the budget before cuts, what I now put in the budget after cuts, and how much I saved. So in special ed contracted services, I saved just ninety-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. The next page is out of district placements. We currently have two high school students that I believe are ready to be transitioned to, back to public school.
And do you have the say, the final say in that?
No.
Oh.
And that's why it's a little bit of a risk. It's an IEP team, and everyone has to agree. People on my end of the IEP team are in agreement that we can probably move these two students back to public school. And I'm gonna change Spalding to public school, cause I don't want it to say Spalding.
Is that with a partner's program, or without a partner's program, them, those students coming back?
These two high school students, it is not the partner program. So I've cut the out of district costs down to a hundred and sixteen, I've, I've saved a hundred and sixteen thousand in that. So in, before you guys got the budget, I cut the budget above two hundred thousand. I think about the fact that we may, for the first time in a while, get catastrophic aid next year. So that might help us offset if we, so, so let's say we go into IEP meeting, and we suggest that we're gonna move this child from Monarch to a public school. The parent disagrees. What, what happens is we go into stay put. So we stay with the current IEP, which means the student stays in the out of district placement, and we kind of go through a mediation process to determine if we win or not. So it, there's no question that it's a risk, but it's a risk I'm willing to take. I've already taken it, cause I'm not adding it back into the budget, unless you all tell me to, to do that. Five out of district placements is big. It's high.
So it's two Monarch, two, one Maplestone, one Charles Art, and one Hillcrest?
Currently, we have two students at Monarch. We have one student at Maplestone. We currently have two students at Monarch, I'm only budgeting for one, because that, um, at Charles Art, I mean, because we have a student that will graduate this year, and we have one student at Hillcrest, which is in Massachusetts. So, this, the budget you received, the first version of the budget you received of special ed, I cut us down to three out of district placements.
For next year.
For next year.
But that doesn't mean that we could get a new one next year.
Exactly.
And we do not have, and we don't have.
And that's been a conversation every year that we've had during budget process, do you want a ghost person? A ghost position, Bob, do you agree with me?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if that we've had that conversation the last couple of years, because we haven't had high numbers of out of districts, but I know there were times when the board would say, let's put a ghost in, let's not put a ghost in. That, to me, when you put a ghost in, you're kind of hiding money. So I, I don't.
They don't want a ghost.
Wanna recommend a ghost. Um, in fact, I'm recommending less than what my actuals are right now. The last page tells you what your, um, what the partner program, the, the budget line numbers that the partner program will offset, and why we were able to put sixty-eight thousand in for the partner program versus a hundred and eighty-six thousand, which is the real cost. But these are just the offset. The other thing about the partner program is, is we, it could be potentially our best, um, attempt at catastrophic aid. Do you think this is information that should be shared with the budget committee?
I do.
You do?
Does.
Just clean it up, so it.
So it's absolutely not identifying, right?
Well, honestly, the out of districts, I have, this is, I could do school A, high school one.
It doesn't tell enough information, I mean, I drive down to Summersworth and I see Charles Art Academy, I mean, I don't know who goes there.
Right. I'm okay with this, I don't, I wouldn't go any further than how I'm reporting it now.
So it's the front, that's a, out of district placements is different than other public schools, is that different?
So the other public school is a charter school, and all we're required to do is provide, um, and I will put that in there. All we're required to do is provide the IEP services, we're not required to pay tuition for that.
No, this is excellent, I think it's excellent, I think it's very, very useful, and informative, and obviously.
Not hiding any money.
So, as transparent as you can be.
Okay, so then if, if you're, if you say to me, you need to cut more, my preference would be to cut from the special ed contracted service line and the out of district line, rather than cut the partner program. Because you, I, I strongly feel like you're going, we have two students that are on the cusp of out of district, two elementary school students. We have one that is out of district, that we could bring back, if we have the partner program, because it will meet his needs. So, my preference would be.
And can his parents say no to that?
Oh, the, yeah, but, yeah, but, um, this parent would love to see us bring the child.
Okay, okay.
And I don't think we should talk about cutting anything out of that special ed budget, I don't think there's.
I just, I.
I, I don't think we should be talking about anything, you've just shown us.
But I know that it's driving all of the other things that are.
But how can you meet the needs, if you're meeting, if you are just meeting the needs of the IEPs? If you don't meet those needs, you're breaking the law, we're all gonna be in trouble.
Well, here's the other question I have for you, this, this question that came.
It's too scary to cut your budget.
Do you want me also to explain, it says, we are, what are the possible, this was from Dave Makas, is that the person that sat beside you?
No, I don't know who that was.
Dave, he's the one that is pro education.
So, the one question.
No, these were questions that I, I had, yes.
Oh, you gave me, oh, okay, so the one question that is asked, do you want me to answer that? On this same handout, oh, okay. So do you want me to, um.
Sure.
Answer this, there's three possible consequences to not providing for the needs of special ed stu- students. One is we get a complaint directly at the DOE, the DOE investigates, it's a long process, requires district attorney, it's costly. The second is that they, the, the parent goes due process, which is different than filing a complaint to the DOE. That also is time-consuming and very costly.
And requires an attorney.
And requires an attorney. The third is that the DOE, if they find us non-compliant, could pull our IDEA grant money.
How much of that do you get? How much of that do you get?
Or redirect it.
Do you know?
We get, this year we got a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
See, so that's.
So shall I put that, do you want me to answer that question on here?
Okay, maybe we'll wanna make sure that was clear, okay, okay.
Alright, so what I'm gonna do on this front page is add, add the explanation of the out of district. I'll add the answer to that question, and I'll clean up these Excel sheets, so they're more readable, or my, hopefully my daughter or son, if someone helps you. I'll be tomorrow. I'm not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So that wouldn't go to the budget committee until?
I mean, I can work on this tomorrow, I'll be traveling to Maine and traveling home from Maine, and.
I just gotta go, I gotta send this out tomorrow, no later than eleven.
You know, it's not, it's not.
This is really close though, to me.
Yeah, it's not ugly.
Yours, yours, I thought yours, that was excellent.
Do you add in that, that, that?
So clean it up and send it to you tomorrow morning, okay.
And then just add.
Just add that in, that's all, don't clean up anything, it's good.
Then I go before, and add that later.
I think it's good.
Yeah, I definitely would wanna make sure they're, they're educated, as well as the.
Well, I do too, and I, I, I really do try to be transparent, I, I don't know how more transparent I can be. But it's not the first, it's the first time in Wakefield that I've had to really defend this budget, but it's not the first time I haven't had to defend a difficult budget.
That's good, thank you, Anne.
Our next side one wants to go to the default budget, are you okay?
Can I throw something in about the budget before we go there?
Sure.
Okay, this was something that I received, um, sitting on the budget committee the other night, and it came from the town.
Okay.
And I did a little research on it, and I asked what the gross operating budget is, which, I, I understand, they didn't take out the revenue, or they didn't do that process, so, um, the operating budget for the town last year was up ten point two four percent. And this year, it's up eight point three three percent. So the town budget has gone up nineteen percent over the course of two years. I know that some, uh, but the interest, the town has other sources of revenue, which are all taxes, of course, because we're talking registration for cars, we're talking permits, so they do have their funds. Does not come from, I was asked to make sure that I educate everybody, does not come, when the school returns money, which in the past was fairly large, all that money does, that comes back from the school, and Marie has said this over and over, is the whole budget, it takes it off the top and reduces the taxes. So it, it affects every, the town's budget, it affects ours, but it just simply comes off the top. It doesn't go back to the town for the town to spend the money, or anything like that. It really and truly is just to reduce the overall taxes.
So can I clarify that a little, one little bit more?
Thank you.
Of course. So, on, on the, on the, so I'm knowing this because I had to sit down with a couple people to explain it.
I went to the town administrator.
Okay. So, um, so when you see that we returned three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there are different portions of the tax rate, there's municipal counties, local school, and state, those are the components that make up the, the, in, in seventeen it was, in eight, in eighteen it's eleven thou- eleven dollars and twenty-six cents. So when we return the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's reducing the local education portion of the tax rate.
Oh, it is even that specific?
Yes, and that's why I wanted to make sure that, and so.
I didn't get that.
Yeah, because the town administrator said it's not coming off the town tax, it's not coming off the municipal side, cause it's not, it's not reducing, in the end, it, it, it helps reduce the taxes for the whole community. But it, it's, it's applied to the education portion, that's all.
Which is where it came from at the beginning.
That's correct.
So, um, so the town's portion of the budget doesn't necessarily affect the tax rate as much as the schools does, because we don't have the revenue from the town that they do, but the revenue they receive is tax money. It is money from, from residents of the town. And my point is, everybody might have thought a zero percent, uh, budget from the school last year was a gift, in fact, it, it was, it should have set alarms off everywhere, um, because it's created this, this situation. But, um, the town went up eighteen, nineteen percent over the course of two years, and all we're asking for is nine point four over the course of two years, so.
Is it nine point five?
Nine point five, you're right, nine point five over the course of two years. So, we have taken quite a licking, you know, quite a beating out there, for even. So we have taken quite a licking, you know, quite a beating out there for even remotely suggesting this. We are nine point four over two years, nine point five over two years, I keep saying that. And the, you know, the town had to raise eighteen percent in order to stay where they are. And I, so I just, I think we tried very, very hard. It's been very difficult to keep it to nine point five, extremely difficult. So I, I kept reading it and I actually went in to find out if I in fact was reading it correctly. The, to the, the flabbergasted suggestion that, that after two years a school should need money is, is odd.
Thanks, Tracy.
Default budget, this was already passed out.
So.
It said this.
It has eight pages.
Right. And while this was passed out, and it was passed out to the budget committee as well. This would be presented at least at the public hearing, we believe both at the public hearing and the deliberative session. And for the first time, there are different rules about how you build that budget and there are different rules about how it has to be presented. Where I don't think we presented it at all last year.
No.
This year we're required to. And we're required to be able to answer questions about every single line, why it is what it is. So it's really important that we all are on the same page about what got moved over into the default budget. And the default budget, when you're looking at this, that very first column is actually our budget for nineteen twenty version three, okay? Which is, we've already seen, that's the one that is the ten thousand forty-five, ten million forty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. But the next column is the nineteen approved, and that's where you start with the default budget. You start with what you approved in the FY nineteen, and then you either add any contractual obligations that you have to this year's budget. Or you take away any one-time expenses. Now, that kind of makes sense, because what if we didn't have the zero budget? Because what they're saying is, well, you were able to run the school on that in FY nineteen. So your default budget should be that amount that you were able to run the school on, plus any additional contractual obligations, minus anything that was a one-time expense. Makes sense, right?
Yep.
Okay. But you have to keep in mind that people will compare this to the FY twenty budget that we've proposed, even though it's based on the FY nineteen. So explaining why things came over and why they didn't, you have to look at the FY nineteen budget. Makes sense so far? So if we're looking at the eleven hundreds, okay? And you look at that very last column that shows what was either subtracted or what was added, okay? The default changes compared to the FY twenty budget. The first thing that you're going to see is the new staff salaries don't come over, obviously. Because they weren't in last year's budget. And they're not in obligation that we have by law or any other way to put those positions in. So Maria and I were kind of rehearsing today, and she was actually doing most of the rehearsing, about we would be presenting this by function. But then asking if people had questions on individual lines. So we're going to sort of practice with you. So we're going to tell you that presenting this by function, if you look at the difference between the FY nineteen and the default, okay? There's a decrease in the default of three hundred and two thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars. And most of that is in the tuition and the health, minus the ones that were reached, were, didn't come over, if you will. Does it, I don't think I made sense, Maria.
It was an increase, not a decrease. So, and so the.
Go for it.
So the, so the, on the eleven hundred function for nineteen, that line needs four point six million dollars. Because of the changes of default, and you can see the changes where they are on the fourth column, it actually increased to four point nine million, which is the three oh two. Do you see what, do you see what I'm going? So, and you can see what each line, what that relates to, why this changes up or down. We, there was a, so for the teacher salary, you know, there's reductions in a program. So because there was an actual reduction in a program, that program doesn't exist anymore, so we have, we cannot move that over to the default. That's why you see a fifty-three thousand dollar decrease. And then it's the same thing with the FICA retirement, because that position, that, that, not position, the program was eliminated. We knew that going into this year, insurance, there, there was some adjustment that needed to be done. So, and then we also know that the tuition is up three hundred thousand. So right there it tells you, right there it tells you that. Then the far column just shows you that in the proposed budget version three or twenty, there's an additional two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the proposed budget, that's not in the default.
Default budget, beautiful.
And go the same way. So in the twelve hundred, I'm just going to do the two biggest ones, and then if you have any questions, Superintendent will speak to it. The second biggest one was the twelve hundred line. And we brought over exactly what we are proposing in version, version three of the twenty, because those are the services that we need to provide for students. And Ann had originally said it was two hundred and something thousand dollars. If you remember, at the last school board meeting, the school board approved moving the LNA from the nurse to the, to the twelve hundred line. So that's what the big increase was.
How much was that?
I don't remember what the total amount was. It's at least forty thousand dollars between salaries and benefits. I, I, I don't know the exact amount, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you're fine.
So, and, and the same process follows through each of the functions, and, and Chris will follow through if you have any other questions.
Yeah, not that I would follow through, but do you remember those three, of course we remember, those three items that are, are costs that we have no control over? So it was the healthcare, it was the tuition and it was special ed. All of those come over into default. All of those numbers come over. Why? Because healthcare, we're obligated under the CBAs, which the voters voted, and we're also obligated under Obamacare to offer it. So that's why all of those healthcare costs come over as the actuals that we have this year, okay? Tuition, the same reason, the voters voted the area agreement. So all of the tuition that we calculated, the three hundred and some odd thousand, will come over into default. And all of the special ed would come over into default. So those, those ones that we have no control are the ones that actually move over. So if the six hundred thousand dollars moved over, that kind of explains where we should have two hundred and sixty-six thousand, the number that you had after we subtract that. Which may or may not come over into default. Does that make sense? So we're really dealing with that very small number when we look at what came over and what didn't. Maria, you had a great way of explaining what I just said when we were looking at the bottom line. Because I was saying, why aren't we seeing in that, if you go to the last page, default FY twenty change, I said, I would have expected that to have been the two hundred and sixty-six thousand, the extra money that was put into the budget. Except it's actually a different number, because some did come over and some didn't of the two hundred and sixty-six thousand.
And of that, when you looked at the six hundred thousand dollars, you weren't looking at the net. So there were some areas that were decreased, such as the twenty-nine hundred, which, which other benefits, which is a thirty thousand dollar savings, if you look at disability, unemployment and such. There's a thirty thousand dollar decrease that's not coming over into default. Because that we know is a true number, that we're going to be contractual agreement with Primex. So I, we talked about.
We talked about.
We really can't use the same number that we had in there for last year, because some places do do that, because it's a higher number, they carry it over. But we know what the rates are going to be for next year. So we can't falsely increase the default budget based on that, because that's not what we're going to be spending next year.
So, but does it make sense to have some numbers reflect actuals and some numbers not reflect actuals? Wouldn't you want to go with the whole thing either reflecting actuals or none at all?
Well, there, there are exceptions to the rule. Most of these are actuals.
I'm just trying to get a bigger bottom line on that default budget.
No, most of these are, I mean, really because of the way the law changed. Before there was a little bit more discretion on how things were judged, yes. And now it's more specific. One of the things, like we showed, I showed Superintendent, yes, this morning, uh, this afternoon, is the cafe services, is the contract services. That we have an annual, we have a five-year agreement to extend out every year. And you would think you could be able to bring over the increase into the default.
Right.
But the.
It's a contractual obligation, isn't it?
It's a contractual obligation, but you have to vote on it every year to move it forward. It was.
People, the townspeople have to vote on it?
No, the school.
Yeah, townspeople. And that's the big change. And it can't just be the board that voted a contract. No increases in contracts can come over just because the board signed a contract. They have to be by the voters.
So the voters could decline our contract with food services?
Well, we brought over into default, the default only shows what we budgeted this year. But what's in, what was, what was in this year's appropriation, that's what's been brought over. Now, in the, in the, in the gross up, in the, in the gross up budget, I did increase it in the regular, in the twenty, in the gross budgeting. That number is, is appropriate, but the default purpose is I couldn't put in a number over. So this is an example. So the law did change somewhat, and I think it was because there was so much discretion of what people didn't bring over, what people didn't bring over. And people could still question what is being done. But we talked about it several times and we feel that this is the closest, the most accurate that we can really bring forward.
That's good.
You know, you said only the twelve hundreds, but I think when we were doing this, it really helped to talk about the fourteen tens and.
Oh, yes.
Yes, and the fourteen twenties, because it so brings the point home of what you can carry over and what you can't.
Okay, so the other thing that the school board did at the last meeting was they eliminated the fourteen thirty, the summer program. So in the current budget, there's fourteen, I'll tell you what page it's on.
It's about on page two.
Down on page two, but I think it goes into page three. The current year is sixty-four, six thousand four ninety-six. But at last, at the school board meeting, the school board eliminated the whole program. So because they eliminated the program, I cannot bring that over.
Because it's a one-time expense, because we didn't need to carry it over.
So that's, so that's another example.
But even in the co-curricular, it, it was made so clear when we talked about the fact that we bring over the sixteen one fifty. Because it's a contractual obligation that has been voted on by the voters by the, that they approved the CBA. But we couldn't bring over the after-school program.
The support staff, the four thousand dollars.
Because it wasn't in the FY nineteen budget. So you start with the FY nineteen budget again, and you only bring over what additional obligations you have under the law, or you subtract out any one-time expenses. So it never came, it was, it couldn't come over since it was zeroed in FY nineteen. So that, that made it clear. But we've never actually presented a default budget in the detail that they're expecting this year. So we were hoping you would ask us some tough questions, so we could practice. No.
It's never, I've been at deliberative sessions and they've never brought it forward, for the default budget. They've read the Warren articles, but I don't remember any details going on, so I have no.
See, each school district was different. Where I was, at the, at the deliberative session, I had to have a sheet that explained the difference between the operating budget and the default.
I never saw one.
But every district, every district is different.
You know, it's, it's interesting, and this year it's kind of a done deal, of course, but next year when we do a budget. I think where you put money and where you don't put money is what you can carry over and not carry over. It's going to be, this year we did it, we're the first, it's like we're the first shot at doing this with this sort of default budget. Next year, I think I might not have gotten rid of the summer school just to protect a default budget. You would, might, you know, your strategy will be different going forward.
You had such tough choices this year.
Oh, gosh.
But I don't think you could have. I do want to say one thing back on the eleven hundreds, which you said you might do differently. If we had a curriculum review process in place, which we really, really need to get in place. Then there would be a number every single year for a different discipline, in order for us to do ELA one year and math the next year and science the next year. Unfortunately, none of that comes over into the default this year.
Because we don't have the.
Because there was nothing in FY nineteen, and it's not obligated under the law.
Well, at this rate, we're never going to get anything in. I mean, it's not going to be, it's not going to be, if it goes into the default, there's nothing there and it will never come.
If you, look at that line, because it brings it home again about how you build a default budget. So our budget is one forty-seven five oh three, but the only thing that was budgeted in FY nineteen was seven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. So that's all we could carry over, is the seven hundred.
Seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. But again, I had, we know in last year, we would have said, well, if we put cycle in, or we put money in there, it'll, it'll carry over. So now we're, you know.
Very sad learning curve.
Yes, I just, this isn't the nicest thing I'm going to say tonight, I'm going to give you that. I would expect the people who have been here longer to have told us that we would probably want to keep the summer school programs and stuff like that in to, to protect the default budget. Because I don't have any idea about that.
But where, what would you have had instead?
Well, I don't know, but it would probably be good to know that. You know, it's, it's not, I would like to have all the information that someone has when it comes up, not just a little bit here and there. It's an impossible learning curve. I mean, it's frustrating for me.
Right, we could have.
If we're talking about cutting something that's going to affect the default budget that we might end up using, and you know that that's the case, then you say, if you take this out, it's going to affect the default budget. It at least gives us the, we may have made the same decision, but we would have the full information before we made that decision. That's just frustrating for me.
So you can carry over, interesting what they created, that you can carry over special ed.
Yes.
All of special ed.
Yes.
So they've just created a situation that is interesting.
Yes.
So just to let you know also, that even though the Warren articles are out there for the budget and the default budget was prepared, it may change. It may change. Because if there's any modifications and we have version four of the school budget, that the numbers will change, because the default is based on both factors, the nineteen budget and what we're proposing.
So we just want to make sure that everybody gets the same version.
Well, this is what I have.
Maybe color them pink, you know, everybody, you look at your pink copy, so that half of them, half of the budget, nobody's looking at the old budget.
That's a good idea. Thank you, that's a good idea.
Make it a happy color, you know, like a, or, or the color of money, or, I don't know, you know, yellow makes people want to go way faster.
Which is this?
I don't know, what's that soothing color? Green or blue are soothing. Yellow makes you want to leave fast, yellow and red, try restaurants.
Are we going to do?
I like it, I don't know. I must say, that's when I painted my house. But you know what I mean? It's like, none of you know. We ready for what? So ready for what?
Ready for anything. Any more public comment?
Thank you.
Okay, um, I, I do have candidate, um, who would possibly take Kim Haley's position. I, I know that I'm going to make an offer to her consistent with the board allowed me to make to her. And if she accepts that, we will have somebody in place by, um, very soon. Um, but I, I don't feel comfortable, um, nominating her or telling you that that is who we're gonna hire until I contact her with the offer that the board allows me to make. So, um, I have the, the direction that I can move forward and have this person on board if they accept the package that the board...
What would the hire date be? Hire date?
Hire date would be officially January fourteenth. However, the person can give us some time, um, the first and second week in January for a couple of days a week. Um, so if that's the case, the person would be here the first week in January. We would get the paperwork going and, um, get her started, but not officially until the fourteen.
Alright.
Okay.
Any else? Motion to go in non-public? Alright.
Correct.
Under RSA ninety-one A three-two D?
Uh, hiring?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have a thought?
I have a question. Approaching our eight o'clock deadline.
This should be pretty quick, right?
Should be.
So I made the motion, whoever's second.
Second.
All favor?
Colby.
Johnson, aye.
Call aye.
Motion to come out of non-public?
Make a motion to come out of non-public.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Colby.
Johnson, aye.
Call aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Oh, moose, oh, moose.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.